Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Jarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
Board members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian. Jarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Quintero.
Here. We have your report.
Agenda for the July 17, 2012, joint public meeting of the City Council and the successor agency was posted on Thursday, July 12, 2012, on the Bulletin Board outside City Hall. The item before you today is Director of Community Development regarding amendments to Downtown Specific Plan DSP, entitles 5 and 30 of the GMC Concerning Civic Center, Broadway Center, Maryland and Alex Theater districts. One A is an ordinance for introduction DSP map. B is an ordinance for introduction DSP text. C is an ordinance for introduction tile 5 and 30 text amendments. And there's a second item later for consideration.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. In the wake of the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, we have brought a number of items to the council's and successor agencies' attention with respect to the real estate assets that were possessed by the city and former redevelopment agency. What you have before you under public hearing, number one, once we open the public hearing, is a proposed amendment to the Downtown Specific Plan that would help us in many ways preserve those real estate assets and allow for future growth and development. Our principal urban planner, Alan Loomis, will give us the presentation.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this point.
Thank you and good afternoon. It's a relatively brief presentation, which is already in your packet, regarding these three items that are introductions of ordinances amending the Downtown Specific Plan. As the city manager mentioned, one of the primary purposes of this is to focus on the civic center districts of the Downtown Specific Plan and include the Alex Theater within those civic center districts and thereby sort of preserve the purpose of civic center districts and those properties for public use principally civic facilities and arts uses. This will add another layer of protection for the Alex Theater property itself, in addition to the protections it already enjoys as a historic landmark. While we're engaged in this effort, it also seemed appropriate to expand and examine some of the provisions in the Downtown Specific Plan, as well as some minor cleanup items that we've been doing fairly regularly whenever we have amended the plan. So, most of the changes are map changes, so kind of illustrate these here. They're very, very subtle, so just to give an orientation of what the map looks like, some of the landmarks on the map, Alex Theater, City Hall Campus, and the Central Park in particular, Americana and the Galleria, so that L-shaped plan. This is the existing districts as we see them today in the adopted specific plan. The proposed amendment will modify this map as follows. It's a very, very subtle change, highlighted only on the Alex Theater property. As you can see, it changes color, so it's now part of the civic center district. As part of this, we are also restricting the kinds of uses that can occur in the civic center districts, so they're very much focused on public uses. There would be amendments to the map here. Another provision that we are proposing, which is not in the Downtown Specific Plan itself, but in the Title 5 and Title 30 ordinance that you're considering, is to expand some of the incentives we built and created for the Art and Entertainment District related to restaurants, taverns, nightclubs. That's the 3004-015 provisions. That's part of the zoning code. This is the area of the downtown that enjoys those provisions. What that basically is, is that if you're a restaurant, if you're a tavern, you're a nightclub, an entertainment venue that wants to serve alcohol, you do not have to go through a CUP process in a public hearing. Instead, the operator would agree to a set of standard conditions that almost always get written into CUPs. They would agree to a background check by the police, and they would agree to a licensing process by the police, and they'd be able to pull their permit. We've had a couple of operators have been or are in the process of using this. It seems to be pretty successful, so we would propose to expand that to the Alex Theater and the Broadway Center District, so you could see how the map expands. This would basically mean that all the restaurants on Midbrand down to the Americana would be able to enjoy this provision as well. So, should they choose to renew, they would be able to do somewhat expedited process. And this would, of course, facilitate the kind of continuance of Brand Boulevard as the restaurant realm.
And for this type of activity on the, in the exchange along Maryland would be quite or very important to them as activity generators for those types of unique uses that would pioneer what is now an area that is somewhat hidden from the activity on brand. So, this type of designation would benefit that immensely.
But we have another map amendment related to the frontage standards. That's where you see on facing the streets, the colors change. This is basically an overlay district that puts in more intense, another layer of restrictions on what can happen on the ground floor of properties where that designation applies. So, for Brand Boulevard, for example, it basically restricts uses to retail or restaurant or tavern type uses. Personal services, offices are not permitted. Those that we see there on Brand Boulevard existed prior to the Downtown Specific Plan adoption. We're proposing a series of very minor changes to these frontage standards, mostly so they change from one frontage standard to another at alleys or existing buildings, rather than in the middle of buildings. We've found as we've used this map that sometimes it's very ambiguous where that frontage restriction changes. So, there's some very minor changes there. Again, I've highlighted where those occur here. This proposal was initiated by the council in April of this year and reviewed by the Planning Commission last month. As part of this proposal to the Planning Commission, we recommended removing the CUP for billiard establishments. Right now, billiard establishments require a CUP regardless of whether they're serving alcohol or not. We had proposed that billiards establishments not serving alcohol would not have to go through a CUP. We also proposed restricting supermarkets on entertainment frontages, which is basically Maryland Avenue. Now, both of these changes, the Planning Commission felt that we were being, they did not recommend those. They felt that billiard establishments were too unpredictable. They recommended keeping the CUP as it exists today for billiards, and they thought that restricting supermarkets was too restrictive. They recommended not changing that as well.
Ms. Friedman, you have a question?
Yeah. Where they, the Planning Commission was afraid that billiard establishments were too unpredictable. Where were they getting that from? Was there some information that they received, or did you give them some research? Or where did that come from?
Not that I'm aware of. It was a subject of much discussion for the Planning Commission regarding, they felt that billiard establishments historically have been problematic and they just felt...
Have they had experience with them, our particular Planning Commission?
Not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
So, they saw a couple of episodes of The Hustler or saw The Hustler?
I suppose.
Thanks.
One of the things we pointed out to them is that a billiard establishment that wants to serve alcohol still has to get a CUP or go through the licensing process.
If I may for a second. Discuss an item with the city attorney. Because of a, I could have a conflict. I don't know if I do yet, but the city attorney will look into the issue. Just to be safe, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. Thank you.
Go ahead. Mr. Weaver.
How many billiard establishments do we have downtown?
Charles Billiards, north of the Alex Theater is the only one that I'm aware of.
And will it be grandfathered?
It would be illegally non-conforming use if this is adopted, yes.
And have we had problems with them? Have they been unpredictable?
Not that I'm aware of.
None, too. Here's that in here.
I was just curious where the Planning Commission would come up with something like that.
So were we.
Thank you.
So, the ordinance that's in your packet reflects the Planning Commission's recommendations regarding both billiards and supermarkets. So, if the council wished to go back to the original proposal, we could certainly make those changes. If you introduce the ordinance, I'd like to point out as well that on ordinance number three affecting Title 5 and Title 30, we would need to change some language. Through there, we refer to the Midbrand District. We'd want to change that to the Alex Theater District. Going back and forth on names in the paperwork.
I have another question. I'm trying to understand on the supermarkets, over 20,000 square feet and the required parking, where the heck could you put one downtown anyhow? I mean, I like what you were saying, no supermarkets on the ground floor. What were they thinking when they wanted to leave supermarkets in, when the likelihood of another supermarket coming in? Look at Trader Joe's, they don't have enough parking as it is.
It is a question because supermarkets are over 20,000 square feet, so most of your Trader Joe's are in a 13,000 to 15,000 square feet and considered general retail and would be permitted with the restriction we proposed. It's unlikely that on Brand or on Maryland, somebody could even find the square footage to accommodate a supermarket. So, in some, whether we restrict it or not, in some ways is academic.
It's unusual that the Planning Commission would say to leave it as it is rather than take it out.
Weren't you talking about some sort of boutique supermarket for the bottom of Broadway lofts at one point?
That's one of the concepts they've explored. That space is around 13,000 square feet, so if they were to bring something in as a boutique supermarket, it'd be considered general retail, most likely.
And most of the ones like the Famine is and the others that you would see in that kind of urban environment are within that square footage as well?
So, the intention was to keep out sort of a Ralphs as opposed to...
Yeah, your Ralphs, your large-scale Ralphs, your Vons, maybe Whole Foods.
And the parking required and the foot traffic, everything does make any sense.
I have a question on the, was your third item, the ground floor uses?
Yes.
So, why is it only in those particular circled areas?
These are where we are making adjustments from, say, primary frontage to secondary frontage or primary frontage to entertainment frontage. Generally speaking, we're going from a less, a more restrictive to a less restrictive frontage and trying to make it where that change of restrictive uses occurs at an alley or at an existing property line. We found as we've looked at this map and used it, that sometimes we drew that map originally where the boundary lines like in an existing building. And then you have sort of saying, well, what half of this storefront is more restrictive than the other? So, we're trying to eliminate ambiguity and confusion by some of these changes.
Okay, but I'm not sure that's where you were initially going. I mean, you were saying that there's preference to eating establishments and taverns and things like that. But I know there are quite a, you know, as we build our downtown, we need things like optometrists and service providers, travel agents, dentists, attorneys perhaps on the ground floor. Does that affect that type of development or maintenance of businesses?
We would not be restricting those any more than we currently do. What we are doing, for example, this corner, the one that's highlighted, it's sort of Broadway and Central. We're changing from a primary frontage where attorneys, optometrists, et cetera, would be restricted to a secondary frontage where they would be permitted. So, really trying to focus the primary frontage, which is really sort of focuses on retail and restaurant, to essentially just that sort of core Brand Boulevard retail experience and making everything else secondary or entertainment, which is more permissive than primary.
Part of that idea would be that, you know, five o'clock, when those service commercial businesses close, their storefronts become dead zones up and down the street. And so, if we push those to the side streets, what we can do is keep Brand this very vibrant 18-hour day.
So, they're, just so I'm clear, they're encouraged to locate in those circled areas? I mean, it's more...
No, those are just to highlight where we're making changes to the map, because this is the map as it exists. If you watch where those circles are as we change, you could see some subtle color changes and shifting.
Do that again, do that again.
This is today in here. There's extraordinarily subtle changes, is that generally we're making, going from more restrictive to less restrictive requirements and trying to make that transition occur at an alleyway or on a property line that makes some sense on the ground.
That there's some kind of balance between what happens on Brand and what happens on the sides, so if we are focusing on retail and eating and entertainment on Brand, we want to be able to accommodate all different types of businesses in the downtown core, maybe just not on Brand.
You're also streamlining things, too. So, any applicant would have a better idea, too, what's permitted in certain areas. They wouldn't come in and try to do something only to find out. They would probably be turned down.
Right. I mean, essentially what it'll amount to is the only places where ground floor tenants have to be a little bit careful about what kind of business they want to propose operating is on Brand Boulevard from basically Lexington down to the Americana and on that two-block section of Maryland. Otherwise, pretty much any kind of use can occupy the ground floor. And that really focuses this frontage standards to what we think is really the essence of downtown Glendale is a retail experience, which is Brand and Maryland.
In terms of grocery stores, we're trying to, not trying, we are creating a downtown living environment with multiple housing units. Want to encourage people to walk, bicycles, et cetera. I'm not that comfortable restricting supermarkets or issues with parking, et cetera, but overall, I think we should be encouraging at least one quote grocery store in the downtown. It can be a health food store, it can be a smaller footprint, smaller presence, but I don't want to do anything to discourage companies from coming to the downtown district and opening a quote grocery store, even though it may not be a traditional huge presence.
I think we would certainly welcome a grocery store in that general retail context, but as to find the supermarket being the large 20,000 and above footprint, if council would like to eliminate that, as Mr. Loomis indicates, it's largely academic because we don't have that space anyway, certainly once you add in the parking. So, if it's council's pleasure, we can strip that.
But is there a top end that we're, I mean, are we going for 14,000, 13, 15, what?
I think you're probably looking in the anywhere from 10,000 to 15,000 square foot range that is still allowable here and would still fit into the context of downtown.
Okay, well, that's what I'm in favor of, something in, I mean, I'd go 15.
Yeah.
Go 15, make that.
Small opens, yeah, if they can do it.
If I may, the ordinance in front of you, supermarkets would be permitted anywhere in the downtown. If they were to locate on the ground floor, Brand Boulevard or Maryland, they'd require a conditional use permit, simply so we could have some control over how they impact the sidewalk.
Only Brand or...
The two-block section of Maryland between...
Okay, but anywhere else up to 15,000 is...
And beyond, they're permitted use.
Let me ask a question then. How does the, you know, given that analysis, how does Bevmo fit into, oh, no, that's a done deal? I mean, in many ways, that's like a supermarket in terms of its size, I think.
I believe they're considered general retail, and I'm sure that they're required a CUP for the alcohol sale.
What's, Bevmo is way under 15,000 square feet, though.
Yeah.
That wouldn't, even if they were a supermarket...
They're probably closer to nine or 10.
Even if they were a supermarket under our ordinance, they would have been allowed.
That would have required the CUP.
The ordinance is, just to be clear, the ordinance is only restrictive to supermarkets that are the very large-sized supermarkets. It would allow any kind of supermarket under 15,000 square feet.
Right.
How is Bevmo doing?
I'm not entirely sure.
Okay. Can you come back with us and give us some info on that? Some of us want to say, "I told you so." Some of us had some opinions, strong opinions on their success at that location. No Bevmo shoppers here on the...
For a future.
How about the staff?
I have a Bevmo card.
No comments.
I have a Bevmo card. The fifth, not a fifth.
I too have a Bevmo card and shop there.
All right, we do have one.
Anecdotal evidence.
You want?
Okay, well, I have a speaker. Noted patron of the arts, Andrea Humberger.
As most of you know, the Alex Theater is near and dear to my heart, so I'm just here to support the proposed zoning changes because I think it'll help to protect the Alex as a local asset, so it can continue to serve the Glendale community as a historic and cultural center, so.
And where are you in terms of board membership or what?
I'm on the advisory council at this point, that's all.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, speaking of the Alex, can you address now, putting that as a civic center use, what use is permitted there?
Essentially, public uses, theater uses. That's kind of very restrictive in that respect.
So, they, someone...
Even if the state owns.
Someone couldn't take it and put it in a bowling alley?
I believe the answer would be no. I'll double-check.
And...
That would be considered an indoor recreation center, and I believe we've restricted that from civic centers.
So, when we say we're protecting it, we're making sure that whoever buys that property would at least through the zoning code be required to maintain it as a theater or a...
Performing arts center.
Performing arts center.
That's correct, sir.
And there's no question that we can do that, or will be a challenge?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, there could always be a challenge, but we believe, obviously, given the historic nature of this facility, that it's appropriate to restrict its use to the current uses.
How about religious activities if a church buys it and wants to turn it into a center for worship?
I think that's not a permitted use. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Loomis, correct? That's correct, yeah, so it is theater or performing arts.
If somebody was to purchase it to, for private productions, like for film shooting, is there a certain amount of time that they would have to be able to keep it open as a theater? Or could, or couldn't, would that prohibit them from even, even if somebody with all good intentions wanted to be able to have it used to the public for productions but needed to do film shooting 55% of the time or 65% of the time? Are we prohibiting that?
I'm going to say the answer is yes, because we can have sound stages or broadcasting studios, production space as a not permitted use for civic center facilities.
Well, I think that's a concern. I mean, if worst case happens and we are forced to sell this by the state, which is not unlikely, then I think that a good compromise, rather than having it stand vacant, would be a use like that where, I mean, the current Alex Theater rents space out for productions all the time, and that's how they offset their costs, correct? And are we going to prohibit them from doing that into the future? I mean, will we fall under the same restriction if we were to operate it? We wouldn't be able to have film production there?
Well, I'm answering your question as it would be restricted. If it's more than 50% of the time, then I think that they're using it as a sound stage. I think we would consider it a sound stage.
Is it 51%? How does it work?
I'm not entirely sure.
And I would say there's not a specific usage requirement, but I would say it's fair to say anything over 50%, then you're treating it as a different use. So, if to the extent that the Alex is currently doing that, but it's not their primary use, and it isn't, then I, then obviously they're complying with the zoning ordinance as it's written now and as it would be written if the council were to adopt this ordinance.
50% of what, though? If you, if you have a performance, let's say, three nights a week, but five days a week during the day, you're doing film production, I would still think that satisfies the goals of the community in many respects. Or even if you were having public space exhibitions five nights a week, if you're using it during the day for film production, it's over 50% hour-wise. So, even our current use, then, we, it sounds to me like we may not be able to operate the Alex even as it's currently operating, if we were to do this.
As a matter of practicality, I don't know that you could operate it quite that way in such a way that you would, you would tilt the scales towards the primary use being something that is not allowed. Because if you're doing events during the evening and you're doing filmings during the day to that degree, those two cert, those two are likely not going to be compatible.
In the Alex's strategic plan, isn't part of their goal to being self-sufficient, to be able to rent it out as much as they can for film productions and that sort of use? I mean, if we do this, are we going to make it so that they can't even achieve their own strategic plan?
Well, if the, it's certainly a fair question, because if you got to a point where the Alex Theater was surviving solely and only by becoming a film shoot location...
Well, I'm not saying solely, but...
But the proponent of it would, was being generated by, well, then they would cease to be a performing arts center, which would bring them back to the council to see if...
No, no, that's not true. They would, whether, it's important whether you define this by the amount of revenue that's taken in or the amount of time. If they're still having public functions, even if it's four nights a week, which is ambitious, or five nights a week, they may not be taking much revenue in. I'm not sure if this is renewed by time, but even if they were having performances five nights a week, if you look at the amount of hours, if they're lucky enough to be able to rent during the day from eight in the morning till four o'clock, well, that wouldn't be a bad thing. You'd still be open as a performing arts venue. It would still be performing the functions that we intend for it, but it sounds to me like they would be successful in terms of being able to be self-sufficient, but we are not going to allow this under the way that this is worded, as far as I'm hearing it. That's my concern. I don't know if that's true, but I want to be sure that we don't do anything that doesn't allow them to bring in the revenue they need to operate.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Friedman, you bring up a very good point. I'm not sure that it would be what, what you had said, where they have a production at night and they film during the day. They simply can't accommodate that. However, there may be times where they're doing more production-type work because they don't have anything in the evening, much like the summertime. So, you do bring up a very good point, and we should double-check to make sure that they're able to do that. In the case of the Alex Theater and Glendale Arts, their primary objective is to have a performing arts center. They may have a significant amount of production to help them achieve that goal, so we do need to be careful for that.
That's my worry, that we don't do anything that makes it to where they can't operate the way that they're currently operating or the way that they plan to be operating. And like you say, and there are certain times of year where they're not having as many public performances, but they need to have that revenue to provide those performances to the public. So, I don't know if there's a way we can craft this ordinance that gets us to that goal.
Councilwoman Friedman, what I would suggest is if the council is interested in this or passing this ordinance that it introduced it today, and then we can go, one of the things that obviously the planning director or the community development director has authority to do is to interpret certain provisions of the code to make sure they're consistent with their intent while, while at the same time implementing the actual language in the code. So, we could, between now and next week, we can look at what types of other uses will be allowed as secondary uses while, while the primary use be the theater or the performing arts center. And I think Ms. Van Miden can add something to that as well.
Well, and that there's an argument there that production type of activities are ancillary or related to the performing arts. And so, it seems that there is already a logical nexus for us to take a look at that and bring something back that ties these things together, which don't result in the concerns that you have voiced, that it isn't primarily being used as a theater per se. But these are all activities that go around or are related to theater activities or performing arts activities. Would be production.
Let me ask a few additional questions. Would a, I mean, if we were to get a call from America's Got Talent and they say they want to rent the theater, they want to do their, I mean, show, I'm not sure if that would be more of a production or a theater or the Gong Show, let's say, you know, remake of the Gong Show. There's acts clearly on stage, but also a large component of it, perhaps the greater component, is the production of a show. So, where would we, you know, how would we do that? Or Jay Leno, let's say Jay Leno says, "I want to come in and I want to film at the Alex Theater."
That's, that's a great example of what we're talking about, because if we were to do that, there are, all roads lead back to the city under this zoning designation. So, if we were to, if the Tonight Show was going to come and do an entire season here and it was going to be closed for other uses except for when they're actually taping, as Ms. Van Miden points out, that is all part of the performing arts. Now, we would also have to do, likely do some kind of special event permit. And so, we would be able through the city of Glendale to say, "Well, you need to make sure that this is open to the public in ways that look and feel like this," whatever this may be, the number of seats that are made available to the public, that are sold, that are go to charity, or whatever the case is. All that still happens, but it happens under the umbrella of providing a zoning designation that safeguards this from being something other than a performing arts venue. And it's, it, as a use designation, you know, it has to pass the red face test. It's a performing arts designation or it's a performing arts center until it's not, until, you know, we all believe based on some criteria that it is not serving the public, that it isn't serving public, that public test. Because if all it is is a sound station that's closed, or a sound stage that's closed, you will know it, we will know it, we'll hear those complaints and either through a filming permit or a special event permit, or at the very least, coming back and changing the zoning, we have those types of rights and remedies.
So, while we're making comments, I'll just go to the other points of contention. I'm fine with everything. I would want to overturn the Planning Commission's recommendation about billiard halls. I don't think they should make an assumption that billiard halls are problematic when we don't have any evidence of that. Charles Billiards has been perfectly behaved, as far as I know, and anything that would require liquor, which I think would be the bigger problem, already requires a permit. And some of these new billiard halls, like Lucky Strikes and Jillian's, are the kinds of things we should try to encourage to come into our community and to say to them, "By the way, you're not a permitted use, but maybe we'll make an exception if you pay a fee and go in front of a commission." I just don't think that's the right thing in what we're trying to have as an entertainment district. So, I would say, fine for the billiard halls. And the supermarket, I'm okay with the staff's recommendation of the restriction because it only affects supermarkets that are over 20,000, 20,000 square feet, which I think would be very hard to get into the downtown anyway. And those smaller supermarkets are a lot more, I think, scaled to what we're looking, what we, what would work in the downtown.
Other comments?
Okay, for myself, I also agree on the billiard hall. I don't have any...
I don't have any issues. I don't think we've had issues at the very southern part of Glendale down on Brand, near the Auto Zone. I think there was a bar there that from time to time, but the issue there has been bars and patrons. But we haven't had any issues with Charles or anyone else. Then on the Alex, I just want to be flexible. I want to make sure that if in fact, well, make it flexible for Glendale Arts to operate it, if we get to keep the Alex, and in the event of a sale, that whoever owns that property has the opportunity to keep it open. But at the same time, we certainly don't want to lose the mission of the Alex, which is to provide a cultural venue which spills off into the surrounding restaurants. So I think we're okay in terms of what you've, what you've written, but I guess we'll know even better next week, have a little more detail. Someone would like to introduce the ordinance?
I'd like to comment first.
Mr. Weaver?
I agree on the billiards, all due respect to the commission, but the way you had it. And I'm for leaving the supermarkets the way you said, because your definition of supermarket is over 20,000 square feet, right?
Correct.
Other, other than that, it's a retail use of it, smaller. So I don't want any supermarkets in that area flat out. There's a Trader Joe's or something that can go in there somehow, some way, that's different. And for not accepting either one of the commission's recommendations, I agree on refining within a week or two what we can permit or not permit at the Alex. We don't want to put any strains on them, what they've been able to do or going to do. The way they're going to become self-sufficient is have the latitude to use all aspects of entertainment to do it.
There you go.
For that, I'll, I'll introduce the three ordinances on A, B, C. You got your direction from us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The ordinances have been introduced.
Bajern, or second?
Counsel?
You have more?
Right.
Oh, wait, yeah. We've got another.
Item two on this agenda is Director of Community Development regarding initiation of amendments, Title 30, zoning and other titles of GMC related to policy change. Changes pertaining to billiards establishments, sign programs, temporary parking lots, administrative exceptions for a number of parking spaces, rooftop equipment, non-conforming buildings, zoning certificates, and miscellaneous revisions and cleanups. Two ways, council motion authorizing initiation of amendments and preparing, preparation of an ordinance.
Ms. Archua?
Yes, sir. As we await the return of Mr. Manukian, periodically, we go through the zoning code and the GMC and bring back to miscellaneous types of changes and corrections as we apply the code day-to-day. And so what you have before you in this second public hearing is a miscellany of, of eight different changes that we are recommending to you. Mr. Foy will see through those details.
Ms. Archua, question, as changes or requests for staff to go back and come back to us with proposed changes?
Yes, we're proposing these recommendations, so we would return to you based on these eight...
The details.
Yes, sir.
These are, as you said, just authorization to initiate amendments to the zoning code, Title 30 and to other titles of the municipal code. A lot of these are on the orders of typos and small consistency changes, but there are a couple that venture a little bit into policy, and we wanted to go over those first. The first you have here is billiards establishments, and this would be essentially the same question you just considered, but whether to apply it citywide or not. So since you just reviewed all of the questions about that, I won't go over that again. But if council has concerns about whether it's appropriate to do that citywide, I'd like that feedback. Secondly, it's sign programs. A sign program is for building, commercial buildings which have more than one tenant and which are relatively new buildings. The design review board is supposed to approve a scheme for how the signage is going to work, hopefully to put some degree of uniformity or visual harmony to it. It's, the reasons for it are obvious. The concept is really simple. It's just in practice that it's really, really difficult to administer. They are quickly forgotten by building owners and their tenants, and as a matter of fact, we sometimes even run into problems with infringing on trademarks, registered trademarks, if we try to make people conform to too strict of a set of guidelines. So what we would look at here is whether we should just modify sign programs to kind of take them back a notch, maybe just regulate size and location, as opposed to size, location, color, fonts, et cetera, or whether they really serve their purpose at all. We'd like to have a study, I guess, of the program, of the buildings where we've had sign programs instituted, just to see the results. Are they really worth doing? And once you...
Well, let me say for myself, I am in favor of sign programs. I'm afraid what will take place if you don't have some type of program, some type of ability by our staff to see what sort of fits and what doesn't. And it's interesting that in one of the conferences I attended, as I was driving down a commercial street, one city had a McDonald's with a very small sign with an arch that was brown, named McDonald's, and a sort of Spanish-looking building. I think within three blocks, perhaps, another McDonald's with the huge arches and with the whole gaudy look. One city must have told McDonald's, "This is the only way you're going to open a, a location in our city," and the other one didn't. So anyway, I'm, I'm a big believer in sign programs, so whatever it's worth. Any other ideas or...
I don't know what they intend to do with it. I mean, would you be coming back with some modifications to it? Yes, absolutely. Okay, you just wouldn't be saying, "No sign program." That's how you're going to monitor? He would show us how you're going to monitor it, stat-wise. We would bring, we would bring the results of the sign programs we put in place back to you and let you judge whether they should just be modified or left alone, or perhaps they're not worth it at all.
We would be trying to, to provide as much discretion for staff and for the city as possible.
That's what I mean, administratively.
To the, the extent that our, our program is very restrictive right now, you end up, and I know it's the bane of some of your existence, that many of our sign permits are done on variance, because it just doesn't quite fit the strictures of our program. The mayor's point is very well-taken, that we need to add discretion to be able to say this fits for Glendale or it doesn't fit for Glendale. But within that box of discretion, to have the freedom to do something that is right for the street or the building or the district or whatever it may be, but to, you know, maintain discretion, but within that framework, as maximum amount of flexibility for the betterment of the street and the building and the use.
So we're telling staff to go ahead, do it the right way. If not, we'll hear about it, and then you'll hear from us, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the third is, we have a provision in the zoning code for temporary parking lots. And basically, these are, it was meant for lots which were only going to stay as parking lots for a short period of time, maybe a year or two, and really not have many improvements in them. The code as it's written now is really unclear as to how staff should approve these and what standards should or shouldn't apply. So we're going to be trying to just clean that up. One section would say that we should have wheel stops, another section says that we don't have to require them. There's a, there's a lot of small inconsistencies in that order. The fourth item is administrative exceptions. That, as you'll remember, is kind of a minor variance, where someone's asking for an exception to the code, but it's for topics which are a little smaller in scope, and you don't have to make the strict variance findings. There are some findings that you have to make, that there is a need for it and that it won't harm the neighbors. We already have an administrative exception for the number of parking spaces in a change of use of up to 5%. And this proposal is just to increase that a little bit, to give more flexibility to some of the odd situations our businesses find themselves in. The next two refer to rooftop equipment, and rooftop equipment is an issue only in the R1 zones. They're generally prohibited, except on a building which has a flat roof and where there is no attic space at all or no crawl space in which to put the equipment. First of all, when we adopted that exception a few years ago, we didn't define flat roof, and it's really not defined in the building code, so we're going to, you know, help the public out by putting some guidelines in there. And secondly, is a question of whether people who have equipment now can just replace it where it's at. Relocating your air conditioner and your condenser also involves a lot of changes to all the ducting inside your building, which dramatically increases the expense of such a project and...
And what is this? This doesn't entail solar systems, right?
No, not solar.
What about things like solar water systems that run pipes around a roof? Would it affect that?
Solar systems that run pipes around a roof?
Yeah, there are systems where you can heat water by running it through PVC pipes that run across your roof. They're not solar panels, but they do, it is a type of solar heating for water. Would that affect this? Would that be affected by this?
Um, yeah, potentially. I think the prohibition that we have is on rooftop equipment.
I think we should look at that, given the legalities of prohibiting solar systems. We may need to broaden our definition a little bit to include systems that don't use panels, because there's a lot of emerging technology for using solar. But even using a PVC pipe to heat water, I would consider to be a solar system. So maybe we could take a look at that. I know it's not common, but I have seen it. So we should at least clarify one way or the other. So we're talking mostly about air conditioning equipment, not dishes, satellite dishes, I'm assuming?
It's mostly air conditioners. And of course, when they go out, people want to have them replaced right away, they don't want to consider changing their entire ventilation systems, opening up the walls and all.
Anything else besides air conditioning that's common?
That's only what I'm aware of.
Blowers, ducting, and other stuff. You see the big, large diameter air vents, you know, because there is no space within walls. So you see those big tubes on top of buildings, same kind of thing, all related to HPAC.
Swamp coolers? Are we prohibiting swamp coolers?
If they're on a rooftop, yeah.
Should we be prohibiting swamp coolers?
Well, this would be about rooftop equipment in general.
So people couldn't have that system at all, because you can't put them anywhere else, they have to go on your roof.
Right now, they would be prohibited. I think what we're looking to do is give you...
The R1 zone.
Yeah, to be able to give you some flexibility for even those types of equipment.
The next is non-conforming situations, and this actually was a topic that a couple council members brought up during the budget discussions. Isn't there a way we can simplify some of our processes for people who have an existing building or structure? I think a staircase was one of the examples. How can we allow them to be replaced or modified a little bit without putting people through the wringer? So ideally, we'd be able to come up with some language which will apply to all situations uniformly. I'm a little skeptical we can. We may have to end up looking just at the most common kinds of non-conforming situations where people want to make improvements, like how much improvements are you making to a parking lot before the current landscaping standards kick in? Things like that. So my dreams will have some beautiful overarching language, but it might be a series of specific topics. And the last is zoning use certificates, making it an annual renewal instead of something that you apply for and receive just when you move in. A zoning use certificate is a regulatory tool. It is just to make sure that your use is permitted in the zone that you're in and to keep track of the uses. Making it an annual renewal will just help us capture, will do a couple of things. One of the things we'll do is, is help us capture more businesses so that we fulfill the regulatory function that the code calls out. We have about seven or eight thousand different properties that are non-residentially zoned. A lot of them have multiple business addresses, so we're probably looking at, I'm just going to take a guess, maybe double that, 15,000 business addresses. We get only a small fraction of that coming in for ZUCs every year. There are a lot of businesses that predate having ZUCs. So the kinds of things that this would help us do is, of course, the primary regulatory function of just making sure that your use is permitted in the zone, would help us keep track of the size of businesses, because especially in multi-tenant businesses, walls shift a lot without permits. That would lead into us being able to be aware of situations where there is building permit, work which should require a building permit and possibly life safety issues that are going on without the proper permits being sought and applied for. And another thing that this would do, over a number of years, it would give us a really rich database of the businesses that we have, which we could use in our economic development efforts.
The only issue I have is, I don't want there to be a fee with that, because that all of a sudden turns into a business tax.
It would not be, it would not be a fee that would be any more than a cost us to do that function, because then it would become a tax.
I, I mean, right now, you just get a ZUC when you first, when you first move in, correct? I mean, this annual thing is something new. And I have a whole problem with compelling someone to confess, give testimony. I mean, if you're not, if you're not in the correct zone, we're saying, "You have to tell us what you're doing, what your, what your use is." I mean, you're compelling someone to testify against their own interests, possibly a, might not be signed on, I'm not sure if these are under the penalty of perjury, but I think you've got a Fifth Amendment issue there. We're the city. If we're so smart, let's go out and do our own inspection and not put the burden on someone to confess or to turn his, you know, his business into a, a target for prosecution. What do you think about that? Fifth Amendment?
I think because it's a land use permit entitlement, we're essentially entitled to ask for that, and it's not a, doesn't, doesn't trigger the Fifth Amendment. It's a, it's a, it is a right, but it's also a privilege to have a particular license or permit, and so we're, we're obviously entitled to verify that the information is accurate, or seek verification that the information provided is accurate.
I'm all for smaller government. I don't like Big Brother forcing us to...
It is a philosophical call for the council.
Yeah, that's just the way I feel about it.
For me, it's the issue of morphine, and if a business morphs from one use to another, how do we either control it or bless it or whatever it is? But for me, it's a business opening up with one intention, and maybe correctly, they had to go in a different direction in order to stay competitive or just stay alive, but does that use fit with that particular location? How we go about, you know, figuring it out is another story.
Well, what kind of fee are we talking about? What are you thinking of?
The initial ZUC fee is, I think, $225. We're thinking of, well, how we would apply it, we could adjust the fee, but about $150.
Per year?
Yes.
I mean, I have that concern too about the fee, but I have to say that when businesses change use, if they're not, usually if they're not in the right zone, there's a reason why that zone prohibited that use. It might be that they require more intensive parking than they have. It could be that it's a use that a residential neighborhood's not comfortable with, and we have to have a way right now to police that. And right now, the only way we have is through complaints, which we do get. So I understand staff's motivation behind doing this, because sometimes these businesses, once they morph, create new impacts and they create problems in the surrounding area. But do I want to put another $150 a year fee on our businesses? I'm not so sure. So maybe there's a way of accomplishing this.
How many, how many ZUCs do we have currently? Do you have any idea? I mean, are there hundreds of them, thousands?
Thousands.
Thousands?
But, but we don't, it's really hard to know, actually, what percentage of businesses we're really capturing.
At this point, we couldn't tell you how many businesses are here in town, or how many employees we have in each of those businesses. When you look at the zoning use agreements, the points well taken, you can also look at a business license fee as opposed to a gross receipts tax, which I've heard council loud and clear, you do not wish to look at. That's one of our competitive advantages over the city of Los Angeles, quite honestly. But as the city attorney points out, there really is, the tip of the spear is a philosophical decision by council, by way of policy, that would you require a license or a certification, or certification? And what it costs is almost immaterial relative to the philosophical policy discussion, because if we said it's a nominal fee of $5 plus 25 cents for every employee that you have, presuming that they'll fill it out honestly under penalty of perjury, then there's nothing to say that next year, if the true cost of that service is $150 per certificate, that it doesn't ultimately grow in that, in that direction. So it's important that the council wrestles with that particular issue. Should we walk down this path, or should we not? Because ultimately, in my estimation, they lead to the same place.
Well, I can just say that when we were looking at San Fernando Road and doing the creative corridor, we had no idea what the businesses were that were there. How can we come up with incentives for these businesses? How can we know what clusters we have to try to encourage more businesses to move into an area where businesses are clustered if we don't know, if we don't have that very basic information? We had to send an intern door-to-door to actually look at the names written on the outside of the buildings to know what businesses were there. How long did that take us? Do you remember, Tim? Just, I don't know if Tim, Philanthropine would know.
I know he did, I don't know. It was actually over a year, and we used two interns. We went through two interns.
So it took us over a year to get that very basic information. Now, how can we try to, you know, if, we don't even know when we have business clusters, and we can't grow them if we don't know. We can't, we can't do real economic development without knowing what businesses are in our city. So I don't know how we accomplish that in a way that doesn't hurt our businesses or cost too much money, but I don't think, I think that being able to grow those businesses, target those businesses, give them, be able to assist them, we need to know that they're actually there. So whatever way we need to get to get there, we need to be able to know what businesses we have operating on our city. I think it's pretty basic. And philosophically, I think we need to find a way to get there then that's palatable to the council, because I know from San Fernando, that when we did that analysis, we found that we had business clusters that we didn't know existed, and we were able to attract new businesses based on that information, because businesses do like to cluster. And we were only able to come up with incentives that worked for those businesses, because we were able to do outreach to them. We couldn't do the outreach beforehand, because we didn't know they were there. So just keep that in mind as we have this discussion.
And that's the upside, but there is a downside to it, that I think we need to really take, I think the downside is scarier than, than the upside of identifying clusters of businesses. Look, we've canvassed this city for numerous different things, and we canvassed the city for fences, we've canvassed the city for, we did Rossmoine, I mean, I know someone went door-to-door, not only just identified what it was, but did a description of the type of architecture, is it contributory, is it not contributory, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, this is maybe a job for an intern, a team of interns. What great, what better way to get great experience in planning or government affairs than to be a foot soldier for the planning department, going out and identifying, knocking on doors, identifying businesses? And I like that a lot better than having people, you know, have to confess as to what they're doing and to the extent, and I don't want, look, I'm a small business owner, I had to pay my ZUC. I was ticked off when I had to pay my ZUC for law practice on Central. What do you mean, ZUC? What's a ZUC? Well, it's a zoning use certificate. Well, I'm a law office, why do I need to pay whatever it was, 200-some bucks for it? Now, if that were to turn into an annual fee, I would be pretty mad.
To the extent this represents...
You use the term report rather than confession.
To the extent that this is somewhat unique from all the other items that Mr. Foye's outlined, if it's the council's pleasure, we can pull this separately and show you a compare and contrast with other competing agencies, what it costs, what it pays for.
I'm not, I'm not interested. This is, for me, this is a backdoor way of taxing businesses and creating more work for the planning department. You guys don't have enough work, you want to create additional thousands of ZUCs, that you can hire an additional person to sit there and process them for, and charge all the businesses $150. We're downsizing our organization from approximately, what was it, 2,000, almost 2,000 employees to 1,600 employees. Here we are, creating, I don't know how many thousands of more documentations and work for, for, for the planning department. And this clearly, to me, the form of it is clearly a backdoor way of taxing the businesses. I'm certainly against that at this point, so.
Weber?
Well, I've been listening, and, yeah, I don't care to tax or put a fee on, but I like the idea of using major universities as part of their class credit to do the surveying force out there, make it a semester project or whatever, in the authority. It's not costing us anything since to do that, but we get a handle, so as Freeman says, we know what groups of businesses are out there. We're only one of four or five cities in all Southern California that doesn't have a business license tax. All the other cities know where their businesses are, and they're, they're getting money for it. We're not for this time taxing anybody for more, but we can get free services from universities, call the different ones, and see which ones might care to take us on. They could make a big class project. Fight on. Yes.
I think it's generally a good idea that we get a handle on what businesses are operating in the city, and in what areas and zones of the city, so I'm all for obtaining the information. So in terms of the, of the ordinance itself, maybe we can separate this section...
It would seem to make sense to give that level of...
Come back with some ideas of what you have in mind.
Just give direction.
Yes, sir. Any other comments?
Well, just, let's just be clear that there's a big difference between a business license tax and a business license. They're two different things.
Well, tax is a tax.
No, that's not true. A business tax is, a business, a tax would have to be voted on by the people, and that would be money that would go into some other source. A business license, you could only charge whatever it takes to administrate it. I don't believe for a second that the planning department only brought this up because they need more work to do. We're downsizing that department pretty radically, I know they have a lot of work. I think that, you know, we just need to fundamentally think about whether we care about what, what businesses are operating on our city, whether we care if they're operating illegally or not. I happen to care if they're operating legally or not. I think they should be operating legally. And if they're in a zone where their use isn't permitted, they can, we can certainly take a look and say, maybe the use should be permitted in that area, or maybe they're hiding because it's being a nuisance, or maybe it is a nuisance and no one's just reported it. But for me, it's about trying to, to help our businesses, not hurt our businesses. My big fear is the fee. I think $150 right now would be onerous to a lot of our small businesses, not to all of them, but to a lot of them. So that's my reluctance, but I think in general, if we can find a way to, to do what we need to do, to find out what businesses there are, I'd support it. I doubt that a college is going to be interested, it sounds like a, I don't know, it could be a pretty boring project. Do I want to have interns circulating for years trying to find this information out? That doesn't seem very efficient. So staff, you have, I think, different direction. I think you give a general idea of where we're headed. I think you have some desire here, at least from three of us, to make sure, to, we need to know what businesses we have and to make sure they're operating legally. I think you're hearing from all of us that the economics of it is a problem.
One more thing, I don't care if it's a fee or a tax, it's a cost to the business, which I don't care to look at at this time. I think we've had, the university before do work for the city, and they made it a class project, so I think we can tap into that kind of a resource again, make the survey. If you, you do the survey and you find out that we have eight, 2,000 or whatever, and of that, we have 150 that are operating illegally or something, then you'd be coming back to council and saying, okay, now what do you want us to do? You know, something like that.
I would only hesitate in using particularly volunteer labor, intern, non-professional labor, to establish a baseline for whether or not a determination was made that a business was operating legally or illegally, because those are very real material impacts.
No, no, they would simply bring back data, the interpretation of the data would be by staff.
But at the end of the day, it's going to result in field work, or having to return to the field. I, I just want to make sure that we're at least on record of saying that, that if, if this, if it were the council's pleasure to go this direction, to the extent that it's, it's a professionally managed process, it would, it would lend credibility to the overall process, but it sounds as though there are very, again, very real and philosophical policy issues that the council has to wade through before we'd ever go forward.
You'll be coming back to us on all these different items.
As I understood the mayor, separate from the zoning code discussion?
Yeah, let's separate this so they can come back with the presentation.
I don't care either way.
Isn't it also the idea, though, to set something up so this is on a regular basis? And I don't think that the plan is to do this once and that's the end of it. I think it's just, if we were to do this, it would be to set something up so that businesses knew that they would have to always be with a permitted use, that they were going to have a way that they would have to sort of report to us, you know, that I've changed use, I'm now this kind of business, but I'm permitted, or I'm still the same, or the businesses, we don't even know now when businesses have been sold, or when a business goes away completely and something new opens, correct?
That's, well, that's correct.
No, if a business goes away and new one opens, they need to get an additional ZUC, if a different type of business opens. If, if a business is sold to a, to a new owner, what business does the, does the city have to deal with them? It's the same use, it's a continuing use, why, why would they inform the city?
Those changes are captured on, really on a catch-as-catch-can type of basis. We do not have a zoning use, unless I'm wrong, we don't have a zoning use certificate for every one of the businesses that we have in town, because we don't even know how many businesses we have in town. And, and so the idea, but most cities have a business license, not very many cities...
That, that's, that's the key at this point, it's, is the business license tax, regardless of what you call it. This, to me, looks, smells, and acts like a business license tax on an annual basis, and I'm completely opposed to that. Now's not the time. If we want to help our businesses, I think we should stay out of their business and stop taxing them, stop increasing the fees. We've increased all kinds of fees in the city, and, you know, it's time we leave them alone so that they run their business better than we can run their business, or we can help them. If they need help, I can assure you, they will call us and they will let us know.
I'd still like to know, even if it's on a five-year cycle or something, do it once, and then three years later, we come back and see if it's the same use there, or it's morphed into something else.
Okay, well, you certainly have three members that want to move forward to explore further what we can do about this issue. All right, so do we have a motion for...
I'll move 2A.
A public hearing?
There's no hearings, just to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to initiate, and then obviously taking the zoning use certificate issue out and bringing, addressing that separately.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
Let them go do their thing.
Right. With the one revision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is this, is this with leaving the ZUC out?
It's taking it out as initiation, and that can bring it back separately.
Separate item.
Roll call.
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Who will be adjourned for the council?
Second.
Who will be adjourned? Who will be adjourned for the successor agency?
Second. We are adjourned.
Now, we've got the successor...
There is a closed session, actually, item and successor.